I'll call the May 16, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. First on the agenda is a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ms. Berry, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Tiller? Ms. Rose?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next order of business is the approval of the April 18, 2022, meeting minutes. Do we have any corrections?
Madam Chair, I have two small corrections. Page three of 12, Item A, Application, is fourth line down, about a third of the way across, it says "formal," and I think it needs to be "former site," not "formal site." The other correction I have, very small again, page eight. Six paragraphs down, about the sixth or seventh line, it says, "They would determine is the situation," I think it should be, "They would determine if the situation." And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any others?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 18 meeting with the corrections that Mr. Bennett noted.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Have a roll call, please.
To approve the April 18 minutes with the noted corrections, Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller? Ms. Butler?
Upstane, I was absent.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Townsend?
Upstane, I wasn't present.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
We'll move on to the citizen public comment period. We have one individual signed up, Joshua Bazell. Would you please come forward and state your name and your address for the record?
Hello, everyone. My name is Joshua Bazell. I'm at 2710 Kings Cross Quay. I'd like to first of all start off with thanking everyone for their time here. You know, I know most of you here are not really paid and compensated adequately for what you do, and most of you are here for, most of you are here for legacy. I would just consider, new to this game here, coming, listening last month. I think the velocity of requests are going to accelerate over the next year to two years. And I think one method that might be beneficial was a data-driven impact approach on making decisions. It would allow us to go through more proposals per month, and also allow us to understand how that's going to affect the quality of life of residents, specifically on, we want GDP and taxes, tax base to increase so we can pay for infrastructure, and how the decisions we're making impacts the overall total cost of ownership for that, such as the infrastructure for stoplights needed for more residents, and also how that impacts the individual business units. So specifically, how can you reduce the friction to increase the velocity of transactions? Every purchase is a sale, which collects its tax base, and that will allow us to fund better quality-of-life interactions. Thank you.
Thank you. As there's no unfinished business for the night, we'll move on to the public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. And I will turn it over to the public hearing chair.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have three public hearings before us. Each has been properly advertised for tonight's consideration. Let me take a moment to review the procedures that we've used for tonight's hearings. Each public hearing will be considered separately. Staff will be given a brief overview, staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. The sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. I will then open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. Sign-up sheets are located on the desk by the front doors, and I ask the following. You come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, address your comments to the commission, limit your comments to three minutes, and when the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the citizens' comment period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliberation period of the public hearing. And with that, I will open the public hearing for application CUP-04-22, Chaberton Solar Vincent LLC.
I'm sorry, just got some last-minute public comment. Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the first public hearing and then turn it over to the applicants. So representatives from Chaberton Solar and Century Engineering have applied for a conditional use permit to construct solar facilities totaling five megawatts on two parcels near the New Kent-Hanover County line. There's a map in your packet for reference, and they'll go over the site. The solar facilities are proposed to utilize approximately 28 acres of the 252-acre parcels. The parcels are zoned A1 and are designated as rural lands in the comprehensive plan. The project meets several overarching goals in the comprehensive plan, including the promotion of sustainable alternative energy sources and production. Prior to submission of the CUP application, the applicant held some outreach meetings to notify the local property owners of the interest to construct the solar facility. Staff received several letters of support that were handed out tonight. During construction, the sites are proposed to be accessed with an existing gravel road off of Hopewell Road in order to keep traffic off of Baker Woods Place and Black Walnut Lane. The applicant will work with VDOT and the county throughout the construction period to ensure that the public roads utilized are properly maintained. This project will not cause any increased impacts to county services, and the applicant will facilitate training for emergency personnel relating to the specific hazards of the project. During the site plan process, this project will be required to comply with the recently adopted performance standards, in addition to the conditions written into this permit. I believe that the applicant would like to discuss a possible modification to the setback requirements as part of this project is proposed to cross the property line owned by the same person. There are 21 proposed conditions in PC Resolution PC-08-22, and I'd like to introduce Mike Doniger with Chaberton. Make sure this is working. Oh, boy. There we go. All right, I got it.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Mike Doniger from Chaberton. Our local offices are at 1523 Hugnot Road in Midlothian, and I appreciate the time to present to you this evening. Many of you were here in November, where I did a presentation as well at your request prior to submitting the CUP, but we also have some folks from the community here this evening as well, so intend to use similar slides, but balance out so that everyone kind of has the same information as what we're planning here. All right, so first, a little bit about Chaberton. Chaberton focuses on development here in the mid-Atlantic. We're headquartered up in Maryland, which is where most of our projects started from, most advanced projects. We have over 50 projects under development now between Maryland, Delaware, and Virginia, and actually also active now in New Mexico, believe it or not, as well. So we are backed by Greenbacker Capital, which is a national firm with over $2 billion of solar and wind assets under management. So that is our operating partner as well for our projects. We focus on a type of solar that's called community solar widely. Here in Virginia, you hear it called shared solar. And the benefit of this program, which is kind of unique in the solar industry, is that if a homeowner cannot participate in solar by putting panels on their roof, then they can participate in projects like the one we're talking about and subscribe in and get a guaranteed discount off their bill. So why is this beneficial? Well, not everybody can pay the upfront costs to put panels on their roof. Not everyone actually has the rights to put it on the roof. Maybe they're renting. Maybe their roof is shaded by trees, so the house is not oriented in a way that's conducive. And there's, the statistics I've seen indicate that over half the houses in the country are of that, are not able to put solar panels on the roof. And so many states, including Virginia, have created programs like these in order to make it possible for folks to participate in solar, which is the lowest cost of energy that we have available to us now. So why are we here? What do we look for in citing solar? First off, you know, there's very limited places we can actually put solar projects of this size. There's smaller-sized projects, then some projects you hear as utility-scale projects, two-megawatt or up to five-megawatt projects here in Virginia is the shared solar program limit. They need to be on three-phase power. They need to be on what we call distribution level. So the three-phase that's going out towards the neighborhoods, as opposed to the big, high-power lines. This is the same lines that run through our neighborhoods, but if you only see one wire, we can't be there. So it limits us a little bit. Here in New Kent, for instance, along Hopewell Road, which we are now talking about here, right out here, the road that runs, New Kent Highway runs through here, and of course Route 60 on the south side of the interstate is kind of the main three areas where you could put solar projects like this one. Secondly, we look for places where we have, we can have the most, the minimal environmental impact, right? So solar is doing good for the environment. Obviously, we want it to be good in all respects, not just get myopic around the carbon footprint and carbon capture aspects of it as well. So we do a lot to make sure that we've got proper stormwater management, erosion control, those sorts of things. And this property in particular has a very gentle slope, which allows us to minimize our impact because it's naturally already sloped in that way. And then finally, which is a major topic, particularly as we come into counties like New Kent, which are more rural-based, right, is how do we make sure that we protect the rural character of the environment and have adequate screening, which I know you guys just went through several meetings here considering different setbacks and screening requirements, and we'll talk about that specifically with this project as we get to the next coming slides. So the project is at the extreme far western edge, right on the border with Hanover, along Hopewell Road. And as you can see, the border kind of comes up right along the property there. Hampstead Plantation, which was broken up some years back into several parcels. This is, spreads across two of those parcels owned by Reggie Wallace and his brother William. But the two sisters also have pieces of the former plantation lands there that have been split up over the years. This is another kind of zoom out of the big picture of kind of where we are. So Hopewell Road runs across the bottom there. And to be honest, when we first started looking at the property, we were following the three-phase line like I talked about, which runs right along Hopewell Road. And so we first were saying, looked at this property and was like, wow, we've got a lot of space here right along Hopewell Road, right next to the three-phase line. That would be a neat place to do this. The topography is really good, particularly where it hits with Dickerson. It's very gentle. Maybe that might be the right answer. As we dug in further, we actually ended up coming to the place that we're applied for now, the conditional use, which is way in the back. And why is that? It's actually a third of a mile off the lane, so we're going to have to build out the infrastructure to get back there. But again, as we were looking at it, talking with the landowners, talking with neighbors, we feel like this is a location where we can accomplish the goals of progressing solar for us, but also be really tucked away. So if you're driving along Hopewell, there's no opportunity for you to know that there's a solar plant back there, just, you know, if you're just driving past. We're over 1,000 feet, I'll show you that, from Hopewell Road and Dickerson Road as well. And, you know, we've taken a lot of attention to how do we also consider it for the neighbors that actually live on New Kent Circle and Baker Woods Place as we come up into the neighborhood. So here's an aerial view, and you can see some of those numbers that I just said. The closest house will be over 650 feet. I actually checked that number a little bit. At 600 feet from Baker Woods Place, and the house is on the west-hand side, so the closest house will be over 650 feet from the closest point of approach of the panels. Now, one of the topics, as you guys have just been deliberating, around the setbacks around the solar panels. And so as we obviously designed this prior to, and submitted this prior to the conclusion that y'all came to last month, and so the 200-foot setback is not in compliance with, or the 200-foot setback that you recommended here is not, per, our design does not comply with that. But what you'll see is that the parcel boundaries are already set back from the closest roads in this area, which is a farm road, essentially a gravel road, being Black Walnut Lane. And so we have over 80 feet of retained trees between that lane, even though we don't have, which is greater than the 50 feet that you guys had put forward in the new zoning. But it's not all on our parcel, all right? And so that's something that we're hopeful that you guys would consider and approve a modification. So we're asking for a 50-foot setback from our parcel line, but recognizing that the parcel line is already post a 50-foot easement of access where the landowners are not, the other landowner, which is a sister, is not, sister of our lander, is not planning to remove any trees. And so to count that in the buffer requirement and approve that modification. And we can have more conversation perhaps as we get going through here. A couple other things I wanted to point out. Kelly mentioned that the construction traffic, there was a previous to the development of the residential homes to the west. The normal access onto the property was via where you see the yellow line, which is a pretty well-traveled gravel road, in good shape, even though it's a little bit overgrown at this point. It connects directly into Hopewell, and that would be where we intend to bring all of our construction traffic through. We'll have to just prune it back, but it's in pretty good shape, and that'll keep all the trucks' traffic off of the road during our short construction period. Here's some views from around the neighborhood. I'll start on the east, southeast corner of the property, kind of vicinity, Dickerson. You can see there, where we were kind of initially thinking we might put the project. We're over 1,000 feet from that point, of course, so the trees are very well-mature forest. As you kind of come along Hopewell Road, you're driving, again, this, you know, very thick forest, again, over 1,000 feet away. Again, the southwest corner, as you turn into the neighborhood, and whoops, come up, come up the drive, you're still going to be over 700 feet from this point to where the project is proposed. And then here's a view looking across the field from where some of the neighbors, which are here tonight, their houses are to your right, and the project would be across that open field and then past those trees beyond it. One of the questions we often get is around noise from solar panels. The panels themselves that make noise, but the transformers and inverters do make a little bit of electric hum, as you guys are well aware. It's very similar to any other, any other electrical equipment that you might be around. We've done a lot of studies around this regard to see, you know, how to cite and make sure that we're citing this correctly, such that it doesn't disrupt, again, that rural character, such as we have here in New Kent. And so you can see there, some, you know, graphic there with the closest house being 650 feet away. We spec, the noise spec that we have for our inverters and the transformers to be at 60 decibels when you're standing a couple feet away from it. And so as the noise spreads out, obviously, as you get further away, it blends into the background, et cetera, and that's the basic physics there. But the equivalence, which are kind of neat there, is when you're at 600 feet away, it would be the equivalent of a breath of somebody breathing would be louder than any of the noise there. So rustling leaves at about 480, 500 feet away. So being over 650 feet away is well outside of where we normally spec. Our internal specification for that is 450 feet. 450 feet is as close as we like to come, and we do have installations that have, that are at that range as opposed to here. Whoops. Okay. Construction period is very short for projects of this size. We generally think of it as a six-month period, but there's not a whole lot that happens towards the beginning, the front end and the back end. There's two months where there's kind of a peak activity, putting in the foundations and the posts, and then it kind of dives down into commissioning again. We'll certainly take any restrictions. I know there's some in the conditions already. Happy with those. If there's others, you know, we've worked with neighborhoods that have a church nearby, that sort of thing, that want to make sure if there's any big events happening, you know, we'll take those days off. So work with the community to make sure that we're being a good neighbor in all respects. We mentioned a little bit about the outreach that we've done. We've been developing this project for quite a while now, and having a lot of both one-on-one and community group conversations. We had a community meeting back in October, and then came and briefed you all here in November, and then have been working to get to the point where we are now. The project has evolved a bit based on the feedback, as I mentioned before, and I think we're in a good place, but I know there's always questions and want to make sure we're able to address those. The last bullet there, I think I was here for a presentation from the county, Virginia County's representative, VACO, and, you know, I know there's legislation working through, its way through Richmond around the taxing issue. We are open to community hosting agreements. We definitely want to be a good neighbor. So if that legislation went a certain way, then we'd still be open to entering into that agreement with the county, so that there is essentially a tax on the project and that we support the tax base here. Just wrapping up with two things. One is the, again, going back to the environmental aspects. Why are we doing solar to begin with? Obviously, we are cutting down some trees here. What's neat about that is that by planting the solar and taking coal offline here in the state of Virginia, that's the equivalent of planting almost 9,000 acres of trees. And this is from EPA-driven calculator. You can see some other, other numbers there of gasoline or road miles and that sort of thing. But I always kind of latch in on the forest carbon capture. And finally, we also plant pollinator-friendly flowers and vegetation once, when, in between the panels after construction's over, which we think is a really great symbiotic way of having a win-win. So for farms that are within about five miles, there is documented evidence that that helps increase the productivity, and obviously, it's combating the shortage of bees and other pollinator insects that's going to threaten us, our food supply in the future. So looking for ways to, you know, do solar plus, if you will. And that concludes my prepared presentation. We also have this evening Jen Anderson with me from Century Engineering, in case there's any detailed questions around the design. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any clarification questions before the citizens' comment period? All right. At this time, I will open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing. Thank you. All right. The first one is Joshua Bazell.
Oh, thank you again. Joshua Bazell, 2710 Kings Cross Quay. I appreciate the presentation thus far of her solar. Just a little background about myself. I do have 15 years of DOD and large baseload electrical experience, and currently working in an industrial facility that consumes several megawatts. My particular question here for the grid operator is the ability of grid stability. I didn't see any mention in the presentation specifically about the point-to-point synchronization and how that's going to be accomplished to protect grid stability. Dominion's had some work on this recently. Kevin Jones, the manager of the electric transmission operations, has a way to do that and should be incorporated in this project. So two-megawatt distribution and three-megawatt distribution, roughly four to 900 homes per megawatt, so let's say 500 homes per megawatt, 2,500 homes. So we're now compromising potentially the homes in the general region if there's grid stability issues. Also, the inverters are prone to failure. We didn't talk about the reliability rate of those inverters. And we did not address the environmental impact of pad mount transformers, what type of oil use, how we're going to contain that, what are those appropriate actions to protect the environment. I really don't think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Thank you. Next on the list is David Aggie.
My questions were answered during the presentation. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Next up is Vicki Coleman.
Thank you so much for everyone here and for the information. I do have, I live on 7247 Baker Woods Place. So, I feel like, based on the presentation tonight, unless I hear differently or see differently, that I will be able to see the solar panels, which is one issue that I have. Although there will be buffers, I understand, what do we do during the fall and winter when we don't have leaves on the trees? We'll be able to see it as well as hear it. Also, I found an article just today from the World Health Organization about the electromagnetic fields and what the impact that this could have on us as residents living so close to the solar field. Also, I'm a realtor, so I have to sell many rural properties. And I have several issues with property values I'm concerned about. We already have hurdles that we have to overcome living in a rural, we're living on rural properties. One, not having internet. Two, just the distance. And then, I always have clients, if we have the power lines behind us or if we're on a busy road, although on rural properties, you don't have to worry about that as much. But they're always asking, is there a dump nearby? And I've never had to deal with a solar panel. But what I have read is that it does decrease property values. And so, I am concerned about that as well. Not only, I've been there a year and a half now and I would not have purchased our property had there been a solar panel farm next to it. I do enjoy the peace and quiet that we have, and I'm not looking forward to hearing a humming of any sort. I just like to hear the birds and that sort of thing. Also, I don't think it would be, I don't think I or my neighbors would want to be a guinea pig for some of these reasons that I mentioned. There's too much unknown and not enough known facts about a solar panel farm being in close proximity to residents. So, I heard about the positive environmental impacts cited, but I'm also concerned about the health impacts as well. So, thank you for your time. And I definitely do not, am not in favor of this happening near where I live. And thank you for your time, I'm very nervous. Thank you all.
Thank you. Alright. At this time, I will close the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing. And I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Anyone want to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first. You mentioned, where's Kelly? They were asking for a 50-foot setback?
I may have to ask Mike to clarify, but I believe they were asking for a reduction of the setback from the adjacent right-of-way from 200 to 50.
Do you guys have this sheet here? It shows it better than the slides. And I apologize for that. I sort of thought through that a little bit better. But if you see the blue highlight is our parcel line. On the other side of the blue highlight is another 50-foot easement before you hit then Black Walnut Lane, which is the gravel kind of farm road, if you will. And so, we're asking for consideration of 50-foot setback from our parcel boundary, recognizing that we have another 50 feet on the other side and that we'll have 80 feet of retained trees between the solar panels and the closest road, which is Black Walnut Lane.
So, what is the distance back here? Where, I believe it's a Harriet Bonds. What is the setback on this piece over here?
Sorry ma'am, which?
It's the smaller portion of solar panels.
Oh, on the far eastern side? Got it. Yes, so the adjacent owner is actually our landowner as well on the eastern side. So, there we have, we're complying with the 50-foot setback as well. The fence is on the 25-foot building restriction line and the solar panels are on 50 feet from the parcel boundary.
Okay. Do you enhance any of the buffers?
We are happy to do more as needed. But with the 80 feet of retained trees there, we felt that was adequate. But we're happy to do more as well if that's needed.
Well, I mean, if you have pine trees, you have pine trees. But if you have holly trees, you might not see through the holly trees. And that would be a regular, all-year-round type thing.
Absolutely.
I would be very happy with some evergreens, probably.
Happy to plant a buffer of evergreens as well.
Do you know the mix of the species of trees within that buffer area?
It's mostly deciduous trees today.
It is mostly deciduous, okay.
Sir, you heard the technical questions that were asked. If you were your engineer could answer some of those, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Point-to-point, the grid stability in the inverter?
Yes, sir. So, grid stability, first of all, is being addressed through studies with Dominion. We have not yet completed that process. Dominion's queue is quite lengthy at the moment on this substation. And so, but that will be addressed there. And in fact, I would expect the grid stability in this neighborhood to increase. We're about 17 miles from the northeast substation, which is all the way in Mechanicsville. It comes all the way out here, basically the end of the line. And from talking to folks that live there, it hasn't been the best grid stability. So, if anything, by the grid upgrades that will happen as part of this project, again, post that study with Dominion, I think that it can only get better. There'll be re-closers in the standard with Dominion. So, Dominion will be able to take the project on and offline from their central operations and have all the telemetry and everything be able to communicate with the project. So, again, I think that box is checked and will be checked throughout the process with Dominion. Inverter failures, certainly inverters are something that the industry has come a long way. Solar's come a long way in the last 10 years, five years even, with a lot of innovations. So, there's really only three components in the solar project, right? The panels, the inverters and the transformer. Of the three, the inverters are the most prone to failure, if you will. But certainly, the industry has worked and the inverters that are on the market today are not the same inverters that are on the market even just a few years back. And particularly for this project, the way we implement, there's two different types of inverters, generally speaking. One is called central inverters. The other is string inverters. We design with string inverters, meaning that we'll have 16 of them, or sorry, eight of them per megawatt. So, in this project, you could have 40 inverters. So, they're only controlling little bits of the project. So, if one were to go down and need maintenance, then that's only a little bit of the project. It's not the whole project coming offline like some other developers might implement. On the transformer question, we do design and spec FR3, which is mineral oil, to make sure that if there's any issues environmentally with the transformer environmentally, then that obviously needs to be contained. But still, it's environmentally friendly and not oil that would be of a danger to the soil. Other questions, Ms. Coleman asks about seeing and hearing. I hope, I can certainly spend more time on that topic. I mean, my hope is that, and our design intent is, that this will not be seen and not be heard by the neighbors. If that's not the case, then we haven't done our job. So, that's our intent. And hopefully, we can make sure that everyone is comfortable with that. But obviously, the proof will be in the pudding, actually, taking those actions, right? To make sure that that's the case. The electromagnetic issues there, again, here, we're not talking about high-power lines. This is the same lines as we have in the neighborhood today. So, yes, there's new generation there. But from the magnetic fields created by those lines, this is the low-power lines. So, we probably all know folks that live near the high-power lines. And that's where that really comes into play. But with this project and utility-scale solar, other solar projects, that would be different. And so, that's kind of, I think, where those concerns generally come from. But with community solar projects of this size, we're talking about the same level of electromagnetic interference that would be already existing today effectively in the neighborhood. And we're staying off of the road, right? Further away from the home. So, it's actually less impact from the project than we have with the existing infrastructure that's out there today. Property values, obviously, is a tough one to get your arms around. There are some studies, I've seen one out of Rhode Island in particular, that said there was a 1%, approximately 1% decrease. Those projects, from my understanding, is we, our staff has dug into those. We're not well-screened. We're not in rural, but more suburban kind of settings. Whereas here, we're taking pains to try and keep it away from site, away from properties and do that piece. Obviously, there's some folks out there that would have different opinions. But I think there is a way for solar to be a win-win for local communities. And we're trying to make sure we take each one of those pieces. I think that covered most of the questions Mr. Moore had been missing.
The only other question is, are there homes on Black Walnut Lane?
Not right, not near the.
So, the homes we're talking about are on Baker Woods?
Correct. Baker Woods, and they're actually on the west side of Baker Woods.
Okay, thank you.
So, you will have oil containment on the transformer? Is that what you said?
We'll have, right. It'll be on the foundation with containment and plus FR3.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, a couple of questions for the applicant. Mr. Doniger, one of the conditions that I see is basically no pile driving that would occur no earlier than sunrise or 8:00 a.m. and to no later than 6:00 p.m. or sunset, Monday through Saturday. And I know the construction period would not be long for this size of facility. But today, sunrise was at 5:57 a.m. and sunset will be at 8:11. So, that seems a little bit lengthy time period to pile, drive piles if you're sitting at home and want to be awakened at 6:00 o'clock in the morning when you plan to sleep at 8:00 or maybe go to bed at 8:00 and you're still hitting piles. So, could that possibly be adjusted?
Absolutely. Our project that we're constructing right now is 7:00 to 5:00. 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So, we can, happy to take that constraint.
Okay. Second question has to do with, condition number four is that the solar facility be no more than 28 acres. On the displays that you are so gracious, that you so gracious provided, I was looking at exhibit number three. And in site notes, it says, item number I, propose forest clearing, which is the 28 acres. And above that, item number five says lease area is 17.9 acres. Now, also in condition four, it says that the acreage is excluding the demand necessary for proper stormwater, erosion management in temporary lay-down areas. Those items are supporting the activity of the solar facility. And if there was a question as to a repair or a maintenance-type item of those facilities, whether it be stormwater management, erosion, I would think that the responsibility would be upon your group. So, why not include that in the area of control by including those areas in the lease?
Got it, I understand the question. So, yes, absolutely. We'll take the responsibility to maintain any stormwater management facilities that are put in. And the conditional use area is the area outlined in blue there, same as the forest cleared area. You'll note, actually, I didn't mention this earlier, but the southern boundary of it is defined by the wetlands, the wetland buffer off of the stream that goes through the center of the property. So, all of those activities would be, the stormwater management is planned for in between the fence line and the blue line, if you will, the green and blue lines here on this document. And absolutely, those will be things that we would be responsible for maintaining, for sure. Commercially, with the landowner, the lease was structured a little bit differently as far as how to calculate the payment. But absolutely, those are pieces that we have to maintain.
Well, I'm not so concerned with the payment. My concern is, who does New Kent County turn to when those things become a maintenance or a need?
Traveler's law.
And if it's fuzzy now, it'll be fuzzy later. And I want to make sure it's clear so it's not eroded over time.
Happy to work with staff to make sure that we adjust the language there.
So, would that include any buffer areas that would extend over property lines onto adjacent properties, even though they may be under the same family ownership, but not identified within the shaded areas that are required to buffer this facility?
Absolutely. So, yes, theoretically, in a practical sense, all of those are planned to be contained on either of the Mr. Wallace's properties as the ground is sloped from north to south here. So, that's where the facilities will be to the south side of what's shown. So, it'll all be on the property and we will maintain it.
Okay. My next question actually is for Kelly. Then, if I may, I'll come back to you because it may come back to you for a second. Kelly, in the past with the solar facility on New Kent Highway, those facilities were located in properties that were noted as AFD properties. And then, that AFD area was reduced by the leased area of those solar panels or the project areas. I would suspect this would be done the same way.
Yes.
Okay. I will just, yeah. Where I want to get to my point here is, I just went on to the GIS and it does not show any erosion or reduction of that AFD. Those parcels in whole are still shown as AFD parcels.
Right. Typically, they'll go through the use permit process first. And if it gets approved, then they need to go through the AFD withdrawal process for that portion. I don't think Mr. or Mr. Wallace wants to withdraw the parcel first before they know if the use permit's going to go through.
Understand, I understand. I just would hope that eventually on the GIS system that that reduction in area of the AFD would be shown in the GIS system.
Yeah.
Okay. Next thing I have for you, and then Mr. Doniger may have to answer also. These solar panels are structures that, as is displayed on exhibit three, go across building and property lines. Now, remember in the notes, the staff doesn't consider that an issue because both properties are owned by the same entity. But is that going to cause confusion on the interpretation of property lines and setbacks in the future for residential use?
I think that the use permit will take care of clarifying that because it specifically references this exhibit, which shows that it does cover more than one property boundary. If something were to happen regarding the zoning or a change in the use permit, it would have to come back before the board. And then, we could adjust the language or take it off if they wanted to try to get rezoned. Am I answering your question?
Yes and no. My concern is the extenuating definition or interpretation of this, let's say, violation or exception, whichever one you want to call it. And somebody trying to use that as an example so that, for instance, I buy the property next to mine, we're both res- residential, I want to build a house across the property line. I probably shouldn't and I probably couldn't because I'd be violated, but they're doing it here.
Right. It's a different, I think it's a different circumstance because of the public hearing and the CUP and how the site pan's going to be tied to this.
So, the exception is going to be ride with this conditional use permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think every time we look at any of these solar farms, we're setting precedent. And so, it's a very good point about this, being the same owners. And so it's a very good point about this, being the same owners. The whole CUP goes with this, both these properties together. I had looked at two, if this was two different owners, then you're making, you know, a hardship on one of the two owners, but it's not the case. But we will see possible things like this in the future. So we can't say it's okay here, but you can't do it there.
Right.
You know, the precedent is that there's the same owner.
And they both agreed to it as part of the application. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Just a clarification, same family, they're brothers, but they are actually separate ownership.
Are those going to be, and I, this may have nothing to do with us, just asking, are they separate leases?
Yes.
Okay, so they will be a separate lease?
Separate counterparts, because, yeah.
We were, we were talking about the trees and the screening buffer. You would be willing to, to abide by a condition where you, there were, had to be so many feet of evergreen or full, full screening of the, of the facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do. So as this is presented, do we need to talk about any verbiage changed for the 50 feet in the other areas for the boundary lines?
I would think the, we're granting, if we would approve this, we'd be granting an exception to our 200 feet due to the fact of it being forest. So that would not change the specifics in our ordinance. We're just granting a modification. But you're right, it would have to be in the, if there was a motion.
But I'm thinking terminology here is, are we looking at like an easement? That you would be giving an easement on the other property?
To, in my mind, to the commissioners, in my mind, there would have to be, have to be somewhat of an easement in identified leased area. That would have to be part of the leased area, area. And since it's going to be released from an AFD, that has to be, I think, aren't, I'm going to ask Kelly, aren't released areas, areas released from the AFD are recorded, correct? Are they recorded, recorded in the courthouse?
The ordinance, yes.
To, of the area released from an AFD?
Yes, for the commissioner revenue tracks all that.
Okay, so those, those would have to be set in stone that way and it fully identified. And I think there should be, that the buffer should be announced if there is an exception, but be no less than whatever footage that we, we decide. So one has to be fixed in stone as to where they are and then identified to be, they can be, there can be an exception to them, but be no less than a certain width. Not just a variable width.
I'm not even going to try. I do know that you all talked about making some changes to condition five regarding the times.
That was me. I'm sorry, Mr. Moyer, but I think the seven to five as, as identified by the applicant is much more appropriate than just sunrise to sunset. Okay? And I wouldn't have, have any qualms with that myself. And just get rid of no earlier and no later than, just make it seven to five, just to make it simple.
Yeah.
And, and then I think the, with regards to item number four, that the solar facility shall be inclusive of those stormwater, erosion sediment control facilities, temporary lay-down areas, and areas of construction. I think that should be all included within whatever acreage that may be, whether it's 28 or 30 acres, somewhat demonstrative of what you've displayed to us. But I don't think it needs to be reduced down to 17. I think it needs to be wholly inclusive to your operating, all the pertinent necessary for your operation.
Sure, I agree. And if I could make a recommendation perhaps on the setback, to be 50-foot setback from all parcel lines with a 20-foot buffer, evergreen buffer in recognition of the additional forest on the other side, taking, being the modification down to those from the 250 that are in the current zoning. Just for consideration to try and see if that makes sense. Yes, ma'am, and then add, add an additional 20-foot inclusive in the 50-foot, 20-foot of evergreen buffer, retain trees or, and/or evergreen buffer inside our parcel. So that, obviously, we're getting the benefit of things are outside our parcel line, but inside our parcel, you've made a direction as to what we need to do.
And commissioners, I know we, we discussed the, the use of describing the, the level of screening that, that we wanted from tree planning. And one of, one of the more recent CUPs, and we, we use the, the term complete, complete visual screening, I believe.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, hundred percent visual screening. I think that should prob, that should be included here. As to exactly where to put it.
And those performance standards that were recommended by the commission were adopted by the board.
And Madam Chair, are those, is that, are there a citation to the performance standards in this then? Or should it be? Citing, citing the new standards that we just approved.
The applicant did, made a reflection to those. In fact, the applicant was part of identifying some of the standards, and he did make a reflection to those standards as we approved them. So I'm kind of facing my disjudgment on his word.
And then abiding by them would be in the, the site plan would be where that would come up.
And Madam Chair, the final thing, Kelly, I did not see a mention, and it may be covered, I just want to know if you think it should be included. There is an item 22 in the draft conditions that the properties or the leased area shall be removed from the AFB and all backtactus paid. It was mentioned in the dialogue before, but it's not mentioned in the draft condition.
Yeah, I can definitely add that.
Kelly, in order to make a, a motion including all of these changes, can we get, should we get a, a listing? Can you list the, the changes that will be, that would be made based upon our discussions?
I'm trying, I might need your help. Okay, so the first one, I believe, was a change to condition four, to change excluding to including. Is that your intent, Mark?
Correct.
Will that change the number?
I don't believe so. It won't change the number of acreage, the 28 acres. Because that, that was the max amount of disturbed area, I believe.
Yeah, my intention is to make sure that the leased area is, is convinced with all the activities necessary to support this facility.
Right.
Not just the panels themselves.
Okay. And then condition five, changing the times to 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I have to be honest, I'm a little bit, little bit fuzzy on the additional buffering. If you want to take a shot at it, I think you have a better understanding with the right-of-way versus the property line.
That shows up in number 12. Is it the only place that the 50-foot shows up?
There was 12 and 13 both.
And 13.
Yeah.
There's also in number 10, the use of existing temporary natural screening is preferable. So we can change that sentence as well, too.
We're not going to take down trees to put, to put pine trees up, are we?
No, but I think we can.
I think we should, we should.
Edit that and include the evergreens that are going to be included.
I'm going to let Mr. Doniger correct me if I'm wrong. The idea is to use as much of the existing foliage and tree canopies as possible, and then adds necessary within the fence line, add whatever evergreens or, or plantings necessary to complete to 100% visual buffering.
Within the partial boundary line, not the fence, fence line will be closer to the, to the panels.
So, within the, okay. Since we're not, since we're not adjusting property lines, you're going to, let's say, lease line? Within the lease line?
I would just say within the setback to make it consistent with the language here.
Okay.
Within the 50-foot setback, that will add evergreen trees to ensure 100% no visibility as, the same language that you had in the other CUP. So you could add that as a sentence at the end of number 10.
But there would be no displacement of current foliage to add the.
Correct.
National buffering landscape.
Correct.
Okay.
Makes sense for you.
They're put together on that. And we can, we can change these and get edited and, you know, language solidified before we go to the board. But I do want to point out, too, at the end of condition 11, it does call out that he needs to work with us to, and have it all of their landscaping approved. So we'll definitely keep that in mind.
Well, that, that, that's good, but I think we, we do want the specification, the, getting that 100% screening in there.
Yeah, it's also, that language exactly is, is included in the performance standards that were adopted also.
That's true, that's true, yeah.
Okay, and then the other change I had was adding a condition about the requirement to withdraw from the AFD. And I have template language for that.
Okay.
Yes.
So Madam Chair, if you're wanting a motion, and I thank Mr. Doniger for interacting with us during the time we were developing the performance standards, you were very, very clear and very, very good in providing us some information, I really appreciate that. So in order to protect, address, and promote public convenience necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC 0822 to forward application CUP 0422 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation. I further move that, well, that, that they include the amendments as outlined here in the last five minutes to include, Kelly, just brief it down, please. Those items that were. Discussed with a favorable recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Wait, hold on, I'm going to read the second line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I further move the planning commission finds this project to be in substantial accordance with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. May I have a roll call, please?
To adopt resolution number PC 0822 to forward application CUP-04-22 with the noted changes. Ms. Thomas? Mr. Tiller? Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Move on to the second public hearing. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Butler.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for application OA-02-22, ordinance amendment to establish commerce corridor overlay regulations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Before you, you have a proposed amendment to Article 28 of the New Kent County zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment simply expands the existing Bottoms Bridge corridor regulations to other areas of the county. Those areas include New Kent Highway from its intersection with State Route 60 and Bottoms Bridge to the James City County Line, Pocahontas Trail, the entire width, the entire length of Pocahontas Trail, from the Henrico County border to the James City County Line, Imaeus Church Road from exit 211 south to Continental Can Road, Courthouse Road, State Route 155, from its intersection with 249 New Kent Highway to the Charles City County Boundary Line, and also Eltham Road, State Route 33, from Interstate 64, exit 220, to the York River. Please keep in mind that the overlay districts only apply to non-residential uses, and they provide additional architectural standards for non-residential development. Also, regulations in regards to signs and sidewalks and, and screening requirements as, as well. We're not proposing any changes to the existing Bottoms Bridge regulations. We're just asking that they be extended to other areas of the county that are likely to have commercial and other non-residential type development. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Rodney?
Yes.
I gather Mechanicsville Pike does not have an overlay district? Mechanicsville Pike in.
Oh, in.
In Hanover County.
I don't know for sure, but, well, I can't speak on other than what counts. I'm not sure.
The signage there is a lot different than in Bottoms Bridge, that's for sure.
Yes, I agree.
Madam Chair, one question, just for clarification. The overlay district should include all lands within 500 feet on each side of the following arterial, arterial rights-of-way. Is it only affecting 500 feet from the right-of-way or any parcel that's within 500 feet? Does the entire parcel within 500 feet?
That, that's a good question. From the actual right-of-ways that I've just mentioned, it's 500 feet out on each side. And the intent is anything that you can see from a public road, we would like to see special architectural treatments for those facilities.
So a parcel who's within 500 feet or actually, on anything that occurs beyond 500 feet does not have to comply?
That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Rodney, I, I thi- I think it's, it's a good idea to have more, more standards associated with the, the businesses that front the, these major intersections. I've got a question regarding the, the requirement for the sidewalks.
Okay.
Considering we're expanding it so, so much, these, these entire corridors. Is there? Should there be an expectation that all, all the commercial development along those corridors will, will have a, will have a sidewalk put in? Or would it be better served to just have it in the, in the immediate area of those intersections? Because there, there's gonna, there's gonna be sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk, all, potentially all up and down the Route sixty or two forty-nine.
And Mr. Hathaway, as I could add to that, I've been exposed to that kind of thing in James City. A good friend of mine, he owned a piece of property along Long Hill Road, was required to put in the sidewalk. It was all along his piece of property. It went from nowhere, it, it came from nowhere.
Sure.
And its use did not happen, it just did not happen, yet he was required to do it, so riding with that. I understand continuing sidewalk from a beginning point where it was, but just to have a p- a parcel that had, that lies in the corridor district that doesn't have sidewalk four or five hundred feet east or west of it, it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Well, I would suggest that the language be amended. To state that if the development is within a village area, as defined in your comprehensive plan, then a sidewalk is required, because that's one of the goals of our comprehensive plan.
Well, yeah, and that's, that, that ma- that makes more sense in, in a concentrated area, so, okay.
Mr. Hathaway, another question, if you can use that to write something down, go ahead, but another question I kind of posed last time when we were briefed about this. And I'll ask it this way, has there been any more thought given to more unique performance standards along Virginia byways like New Kent Highway? Some examples, e- like increasing the setbacks a little bit, or maybe prefacing the building before parking, you know, parking behind the building, just to maintain that byway standard?
You know, I would really recommend that. Not so much weight, but I think as we start our comprehensive planning process for the county, I think that needs to be part of the discussion of what we want our byways to look like. And then as we come up with that goal and objectives, then we can write in ordinance to, to put some teeth and, and require that. So I, I, I would suggest, let's discuss that through the comprehensive planning process, and then we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Hathaway? Okay, well, at this time, I will open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing. Thank you. All right. We have Joshua Bazell.
Hello, Joshua Bazell, twenty-seven ten Kings Crossway. I, I would like to express my appreciation for this overlay and all the efforts that have gone into it to enhance the charm and character of the New Kent County. I would like to speak in support of the sidewalks, at least in the village districts, living in several different areas in the state, in the country. I've seen successful execution of this, that enhances walkability and allows for a green nature of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mark Daniel.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mark Daniel, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to, to, to address you. I've got some experience with business and some experience with the development in our county. And what you just heard, Mr. Hathaway say, think about what you just heard. He said it's a great idea, right, but we should talk about this thing maybe in a village concept, you know why? Because every part of New Kent doesn't look the same. Eltham looks different than Bottoms Bridge, it looks different than Problem's Forge, right? I mean, there's different characters, and who in the world has ever took the county from one end to the other, the entire road? You talk about places that have ten miles between businesses, and there's some spots that be businesses neck to neck, they should be taken one-on-one, they should be taken on a one-on-one basis. It's been tried before, it's not necessary. Let me ask you a question, why do you nice people leave your homes and come up here once a month? You've got lots of important things to do, you've got your family, you've got homework, right? We have a system here, you know what the system is, we have design standards, and we have a comprehensive plan, that's where this should be addressed? I trust that someone puts you on this board because you can make decisions about it, if someone has an issue, you know what, I, I want to change this or that, I just heard you, heard you go through it, they come to you. It's not a good idea to place it on the entire county from end to end, it's not. And, and quite frankly, it's, it's a situation where it could be abused. And, and what, I, I hear your comments, we don't want this to look like Menlothian Turnpike or Mechanicsville Turnpike, I think you said, you know what? Remember, all these rules homogenize things and make them all look like New Jersey or New York, this is New Kent, every part of the county has a different character, I think we can agree on that. It's, it's an overreach to think that you're going to go from Bottoms Bridge to the James City County line and make all those places look the same. No, it should be done with our design standards in our comprehensive plans, like the, the system that we have, that's why you're here. Someone said, well, these people have the wisdom to think things through. If you've got an issue, change your comprehensive plan, change the design standards, don't try to make everything look the same, cause that won't work. And what's the cause and effect that makes this, I call it an overkill zone, I mean, it really is, it's trying to make everything fit into one box, and it doesn't. Now, I mean, you might see something on the news, four tourists a day succumb to life-threatening conditions because the buildings in Problem's Forge didn't look like the ones in Bottoms Bridge. I never heard such a thing, there's different parts, can they look different? Why homogenize or try to homogenize them and, and just disregard why you're here? You're here to, to come up with design standards, right, and, and look at the comprehensive plan, that's our system, that's what's been designed. And these things are subjective, too, you might not think so, but one person or two people can literally say, I'd like the front of the building to be blue or green, and when you're in overlay district, that's a lot of authority. I think it's in an, an overreach, it adds more bureaucracy, red tape, and it's a subjective decision by one or two people who could be having control issues in their lives. There are some people who literally get elected and come and camp out in the administrator's office.
Mr. Daniel, your time's complete.
Yeah, camp out at the administrator's office all day long and say, I want this, I want that, I want this, we have a system in place, that's why you're here, thank you, I hope you've got the courage to say that this is too much.
And that was it for the citizens' comment portion? So I will turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Any further questions? Concerns?
If, if I may address the last comment, just a little, because I definitely understand the, the concern. I would just like to make sure that we all understand that what's being proposed to you today are design standards, and they're loosely based. Design standards that I believe allows enough flexibility that different areas can take on a, a, another character, a different character. It does not state that every single house has to be built exactly like each other, it just states what materials are acceptable. And it's a wide range of materials that are permitted and that are listed in this, this ordinance, so. And I'd also like to state that the comp plan is great, and that's our guide, but there's no enforcement teeth in the comp plan as well. We can't regulate through the comp plan, but we build our regulations based on the comp plan, and this is a part of the regulations that you have before you, I believe is consistent with our comp plan.
Rodney, the only thing we can go on and experience is what we've done and what you've done and, and we've done in Bottoms Bridge.
Yes.
What has been the feedback from businesses, existing and or new, to what we were proposed here?
You know, we, we have applied this to several businesses in the Bottoms Bridge District. We've had no complaints, in fact, I've received comments from the business community, as long as I know what my standards are upfront, we'll build to it. They don't like when they have to guess, and they're hit with surprises, and they like the fact that everything is laid out what they're required to do upfront before they be, make the investment. So it's been a positive feedback, and I mean, Tractor Supply fell under this, Advance Auto fell under this. Kelly, are there any others?
I think Waffle House did, and they got, they got an exemption for.
Well, well, yes.
For their signage.
Yes, their signage fell in, but they actually started their construction right before this was adopted. But what we did, because we wanted the Waffle House to look nice, the Economic Development Authority actually provided Waffle House with an incentive. So they would go above and beyond the original design that they presented to us. Oh, yes, Fastmore, which is a nice facility.
Ms. Chairman. If there's no more discussion, I'd be happy to, I guess, put a motion on the floor.
Go ahead, please.
Ordinance amendment OA dash zero two dash two-two, I would consider this for the Board of Supervisors to review. I don't know if any other verbiage needs to be put in there.
We'll include the language regarding the sidewalks only being applicable to area, well, the requirement for sidewalks being applicable to areas that are designated as villages in the comp plan.
Well, then I'll make the motion that whatever you have opportunity used, I'm not going to repeat it, but we'll go with that.
Okay. Yeah, can you say it?
In order to address and protect and promote the public conveniency necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county. I'm going to adopt the resolution number PC one zero dash two-two to forward the ordinance amendment zero, or OA zero two, two-two to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Can you have a roll call, please?
To adopt PC dash one zero dash two-two and forward ordinance amendment OA dash zero two dash twenty-two to New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation with the noted sidewalk change. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller? And Ms. Rose?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
All right, we have one more public hearing, so, Ms. Butler, let, let you finish this off.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for application OA dash zero three dash two-two, ordinance amendment to amend the provisions for open space cluster subdivision. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Again, this is a proposed amendment to section ninety-one dash one twenty-seven of the subdivision ordinance. Special provisions for open space and cluster subdivisions, and a proposed amendment to Article seven, agri- of the zoning ordinance titled agricultural, agricultural A-one. And I'll start with the why, why is this being proposed today? At the March regular board meeting, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to review its subdivision ordinance and seek input from the Planning Commission to ensure the following. The ordinance facilitates growth, which occurs in a planned fashion consistent with the county's future land use plan. Development occurs in areas of the county that has the proper infrastructure and services to support it. And thirdly, county's ordinance is consistent with the true intent of the state's requirement, which is preserving open space. The state requirement is contained in such in fifteen point two, twenty-two, eighty-six point one, it requires localities with a growth rate of ten percent or more. To provide in its zoning or subdivision ordinance standards for clustering, single-family dwellings. The ordinance must be applicable to at least forty percent of the unimproved land contained in residential and agricultural zoning classifications. The density shall be based on the minimum lot size allowed in the zoning district. And the approval process shall be administrative without conducting a public hearing or requiring a use permit. Our current regulations for open space and cluster subdivisions consist of, the requirement of a property must be at least seventy-five acres. And designated as rural lands by the comp plan and cannot be zoned residential. The density calculations are calculated by the total parcel size minus the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Areas. Divided by the minimum lot size of the zoning district, which is one point five acres, and I'll come back to that with an example. Infrastructure requirements, lots must access internal roads. If eight or more lots are proposed in a community, a water system, a community water system is required. And recreational space equivalent to at least five percent of the gross land area is required. The open space requirement involves no less than fifty percent of the gross area being designated as open space. What's being proposed in the ordinances that you have before you this afternoon? First, the minimum acreage requirement to do a cluster subdivision is being proposed to be reduced from seventy-five acres to fifty acres. The density calculation is proposed to be revised. To state that the total pars- to include the total parcel size divided by the proposed minimum lot size. Which staff is proposing that the minimum lot size be ten acres. So therefore, one house for every ten acres for the cluster subdivision. There's also a lot size requirement proposed, no residential lot shall exceed two acres. And there's an open space requirement proposed, no less than eighty percent of the gross or area of an open space development shall be presented as open space. The whole cluster subdivision was adopted in two thousand and six as part of the Kane administration as, as governor. And a big push that he had as, as the governor was to increase the amount of open space in, in the state of Virginia. He established various programs, various grant programs for localities to purchase conservation easements to preserve open space. He established an office to track the number of conservation easements in, across the Commonwealth. He was very dedicated to preserving open space in the. He was very dedicated to preserving open space in the state of Virginia, and that is one of the reasons that this development requirement was adopted. It was not adopted as a way to have a byright process to get around localities ordinances and make development more easier. It was truly adopted to preserve open space. There are some additional requirements that are proposed in, in the ordinance. Section L listed in the draft ordinance contains six standards to protect environmentally sensitive features, agriculturally significant lands, historic resources, and view sheds from existing public roads. That is a new section that is being added to the existing ordinance. In the zoning ordinance amendment, Article seven, there's two changes being proposed. One is to increase the minimum lot size from one point five acres to ten acres. And I know this sounds dramatic and, and significant, but actually, as far as that minimum lot size of one and a half acres, how that impacts development in the county, it has very little impact because there's no way to subdivide today and create a one and a half acre lot unless you're doing a family subdivision, which family subdivisions would still be permitted as part of what's been proposed today. A byright subdivision in A one, the minimum lot size is fifteen acres, and that's if the lot is on a public road. Twenty-five acres if the lot is, does not have public road access, well above the ten acre requirement that I'm proposing today. All of the other special subdivisions that are permitted that would allow you to get smaller lots, and when I say special, I mean family subdivision, your parent tract subdivision, those would still be permitted as they are today. The other change in the zoning ordinance is a change to the boundary line adjustments. There are requirements, if you have two non-conforming lots, less than ten acres, two non-conforming lots, less than an acre and a half, and where you have two lots that are requesting a boundary line adjustment and only one lot is non-conforming. There are specific requirements to lot sizes listed in the ordinance. Just a quick example of density calculations and how this, what's being proposed would impact development in the county. I'm going to give an example of a hundred acre parcel, and this is New Kent County, so you have to assume that there's RPA on it. So we're going to say fifteen acres of that hundred acre tract is in RPA. The way we would currently calculate your density for a cluster subdivision is you would take that hundred acres, you would back out the fifteen acres of RPA, which would give you eighty-five acres, and you divide that by one point five acres, the minimum lot size for agriculture. Therefore, you would be able to develop fifty-seven lots on that hundred acre parcel, and you would be required to set aside fifty acres of open space. What's, yes?
I, I don't think that's what it says on H one. It says eighty percent of the gross area of open space.
This is what is permitted today, prior to making the proposed change, if you decide, if the decide change is made. But, but, that, that, that's a good segue because that leads me into what would be required u- under the, the new ordinance that, that's being proposed. You would take that hundred acre lot and you would simply divide it by ten acres, which divided by ten, which is the minimum lot size, proposed minimum lot size for agriculture, and therefore you'd be able to develop ten lots. And you would have to set aside eighty acres in open space.
I'm sorry, Rodney.
No.
You're, there's lot size, and then there's the number of lots.
Yes.
You're not saying that it must be a minimum of a ten acre for a lot, are you?
We're saying, well, we are proposing to change in your A one zoning, in, in your zoning ordinance, you have minimum lot sizes for every district. Each district has a minimum lot size. Currently, one point five acres is the minimum lot size for agriculture. We are proposing to change that to ten acres in your, in, in the zoning district. But we're just saying you base your density calculation on the minimum lot size. There is no minimum lot size truly for a subdivision, for a cluster subdivision. So you can develop the lot as small as you physically can, but the density, the number of lots that you can get is based on the minimum lot size. And I know it's confusing, but, yeah. Yes, I, I, I believe that is what is, is written here. That's being proposed, yes. Yes.
But if you have a hundred acres, you're saying there'd be ten available lots.
That's correct.
Only ten.
Only ten.
Even if there was, well, this comes out to, there's only, there's only twenty acres in your- Eighty, eighty percent.
Right, right, right. There's only twenty acres.
So there's twenty, only twenty, like, two.
Maximum of, of two. Now, I mean, they could be acre lots, acre and a half lots, but the maximum lot size would be two acres.
Can I, can I ask, is that what we're saying here? Section ten?
No, you said the intent.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. That's the intent, okay, okay. I, I know in the last thing we did, we want to make sure people understand what they can expect when they come here.
That's correct.
Okay, I, I'm not sure if that same type of language is in this, if, if they know what to expect.
Well, you know, looking at the ordinance, if you go to ninety-one, one twenty-seven and the language that is proposed in section B, minimum area for application, it talks about the density. The minimum parcel size for consideration of an open space cluster shall be fifty acres. Permissible density shall be one lot per ten acres. That's for the density calculation. That's correct, that's. And then- Yes, if you go to item G one, no residential lot within an open space or cluster subdivision, select C, two acres. There shall be no minimum lot size.
Mr. Moyer, I, I did a comparison for my own benefit, I'm willing to share with you if you, if that helps.
Yeah, Mr. Moyer, I agree with what Rodney's saying.
Yes.
Is there no in-between, Rodney? I mean, do we have to go from one point five to ten?
You know, I, I, I truly think the board is, is, is looking for guidance from the planning commission. So if there's another recommendation, I, I think the board wants to consider that.
Go ahead.
It, it seems like a very drastic, drastic change, considering, I mean, the, the, the amount of open space has, has been, has been increased. But, but you're still, you know, there, any developer would be hamstrung with it, with the, with the number of lots.
And, you know, I guess that's kind of my, my closing statements to that, yes, this seems like it would shut down development in the county, but no, and, and, and that's really not the intent. There are other ways in our subdivision and development ordinance to get very, very dense lots, and it involves a rezoning. Will an impact of this be more developers will have to go through the rezoning process? Probably so, and I don't think that that's a bad thing, because with the rezoning process, well, now you have an opportunity for citizen input, which you don't with cluster subdivisions. You have an opportunity for a conversation between staff and development to look at the impacts of that development and potentially talk about proffers or a way to address those impacts, which you don't with clusters. And ultimately, there's the ability to say yes or no, and there's not with clusters.
Let, let me ask this, is there, I, I under, I understand the, the idea of trying, trying to get these clusters under, under control, but I guess move them into areas that, that would, would make sense, rather than out, out in the middle of an agriculture area, you might want them closer, closer into hi- higher density areas. So the, the thought that you could, you could in some way incentivize, incentivize that.
You know, our, our comp plan, our future land use portion of our comp plan, really, I mean, that, that, that's the plan. We want to encourage density surrounding our four interstate in, intersections to support the commercial development that's, that's there. Not only is that the reason we want to encourage density there, we hope that by strategically locating density around the county, you relieve the pressure for areas of the county that you want to keep as, as rule. The problem with designating areas around those commercial sect, sectors for cluster subdivisions is, well, number one, the state code says it has to be applicable to forty percent of your county. So it gets a little tricky, we can probably do it, but it gets a little tricky in draft and identifying areas that consist of forty percent of the county and areas that would allow for cluster subdivisions. That means a parcel is big enough. And the other challenge that I, I, I run into is, you know, these are areas that we really want to see density in. Do we really want eighty or fifty percent preserved for open space? Again, these areas are right around the four interstate intersections where the county has made huge investments to already to serve people with water and sewer and public utilities. It's just, just a challenge with that concept.
So you're saying one of the things we're trying to do is increase density around the intersections?
That, that's what I'm thinking.
And then the rural area, decreased density.
Well, in the rural areas, relieve the pressures for growth in the rural areas by providing the opportunities in the areas that we want to grow, that, that we want to grow.
Couple of things, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, what did we promise AutoZone about people that will be able to live around their, their AutoZone? There, there's, we, the whole, three hundred and fifty-two, we're going to need housing for those people, and hopefully they live in New Kent.
Well-
And we, we, you know, we have a, we, we have an apartment complex in Patriot Slant coming online, maybe, maybe finished in two years, when AutoZone will be. The other cross street hasn't even come to us yet, Boyd's Liberty Land.
Yes, yes.
So that's two, three years away. They're coming in with three hundred and fifty-two people.
Yes.
That hopefully will they find, so I, I, I'm not quite sure if this is a time and place that we should be eliminating that, that kind of density in the rural areas. You know, the, the other thing was that, that ten percent growth, that is the trigger for looking at cluster? You said in the beginning of the county, was it a ten percent growth or more?
The, the state code requires-
What, what is that metric? What, what is the measure?
If you have grown more than ten percent since the last census.
Population?
In population, you're required to have cluster provisions.
That's us.
Yes, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
We are, okay.
Well, and, and, you know, the whole growth, I mean, I'm not against rooftops. I definitely, I think we need rooftops. You know, every business we talk, talk to, I mean, that's the first thing they ask, where are your rooftops? We've made no promises to AutoZone regarding any type of development or rooftops, but AutoZone did a ver- very thorough analysis of their workforce, and they've made the decision that they, they could locate. One thing I think, though, by really concentrating growth again in areas surrounding commercial growth areas, one thing that businesses look at is they don't want to know the number of rooftops in the entire county. Usually, they want to know the number of rooftops in the two or three mile radius. So I think concentrating growth is actually not a bad thing and could actually help us with economic development.
Madam Chair, could I suggest we continue with the public hearing process and then we can grill Mr. Hathaway a little bit later?
All right, no problem.
I, I think, I think that's wise.
At this time, we will open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing. Thank you. All right, first up is Joshua Bazell.
Hello, Joshua Bazell, twenty-seven ten King Crossway. Hello again. So I think we have a, a good start point here with this, right? So we want to preserve certain portions of the county, but we also want to manage growth in other portions of the county. I think there's a couple of ways we can do that, and I think we can probably, the, the future speakers will probably outline some ideas that we shall consider. There, there could be portions of cluster overlay portions of the county where we want to concentrate and we can adjust, but we can also maintain the extremities of the county that do not have public surfaces in those portions with this. That might be a middle ground perhaps, because we want to be able to link all of the electricity and we want to link all the water, right? Once we link the water and electricity, cost goes down, and then we can also get better quality water here. I don't have the, all the solutions here. Everybody here is more smarter than I am, so I'm going to yield the floor to everybody else, but perhaps a cluster overlay might be a middle ground for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next up is Elizabeth.
I'm so sorry, it's Elizabeth Greenfield, I apologize. I'm with the Home Building Association of Richmond. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I'm here just to offer some brief comments on the proposed amendments before you. I represent the developers and builders and contractors and engineers that, many whom live and work in your county and own property, and we do have some concerns with the significant shift, or extreme, I guess is what we used earlier, in density and in open space requirements. I understand you're going through a comprehensive plan review, and we would just respectfully ask if these, these amendments could maybe be considered as part of that review or just maybe allow more time for input from stakeholders in this process. And as I was going through your comprehensive plan, I did notice that one of your goals in your housing chapter and goal one, objective C, one of your strategies is to evaluate cluster subdivision, cluster subdivision provisions in the subdivision ordinance and update if necessary to make the technique more useful in a primary development technique in the rural areas of the county. And I'm afraid with this shift in your density and open space that that might conflict with the language that's in your comp plan as a primary development tool. So again, we understand the need to preserve your rural character and, and manage growth appropriately. We would just ask for more opportunity to, to weigh in as you consider these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next up is Matthew Starr. And then next up is Matthew Starr.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Matthew Starr. I think most of you know me. Lived in the county since I was two, so I'm told. And I am a small developer in the county. I have a little bit of experience with the cluster subdivision. And so, I come tonight just to make a few quick comments. First of all, I think that the need for an adjustment to the cluster ordinance is important, and I think that we're on the right track, to be honest. I think that a lot of the proposed amendments could work with a little tweaking. And I'll just hit on a couple of those that come to mind. Number one, I think that the density calculation is just too extreme. And I think there probably is a happy compromise somewhere in there. I don't know what that is. You know, I sent a letter to all the Commissioners, and I think in the letter I had mentioned a density calculation of one house per two acres. I think that's a good place to start. But honestly, in its current form, if the one house per two acres applies to all of the county, I think it is too liberal. And I think that the answer to that is to guide the growth into specific areas that we want to see the growth. I think that's what we've all kind of been talking about. And I propose maybe the way to do that is some sort of a cluster overlay that would, obviously, like Rodney, Mr. Hathaway had said, you know, it would have to be forty percent of the county to make that work. And it would be, I think, worthwhile to at least look at some maps of what that might look like. If we did that, then it would solve the problem of the public water system. And I say the problem because if you use the hundred lot or hundred-acre example, you know, you end up with the proposed ordinance, you would end up with ten lots. At the eighth lot, you're required to have the water system or to connect to public water. It's cost prohibitive economically to put in a central water system at the eighth lot. But if we had public water, it would not be. So, my proposal, or I would ask you to consider those things as well as the fact that, you know, this cluster ordinance really makes it possible for the small guy to be able to do that. And I would call myself the small guy. I'm not Ryan Holmes, I'm not H.H. Hunt, I'm not D.R. Horton. Those guys have much deeper pockets than I do. If the ordinance passes in its current form, it would just effectively cut it off. It won't be useful, a useful tool. And I think that it can be a very useful tool to guide growth in the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that is everyone that has signed up. So, at this time, I will close the citizens' comment portion and close the public hearing for application OA-03-22 ordinance amendment to amend the provisions for open space cluster subdivision and turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. All Commissioners?
Can the grilling continue with Mr. Hathaway? I'm sorry about that, but I just give a little joculary here. And maybe this is questioned for Mr. Hefty, too, but we go by a metric of determining our growth rate in New Kent County, and we're at that ten percent now. But if we're in 2030, we're under that ten percent. I mean, things change dynamically around anymore today. Would this, would we still be required to have a cluster ordinance?
We would not be required to have it. I mean, we could have it if the board desired to, but we would not be required.
So, is the metric whenever the new census information comes in? Or when does that metric is identified that we must have it, just from the state legislature?
That's...
It's the census.
Yes.
Twenty thirty, if we're no longer growing at ten percent, we could, if we're all here, we could eliminate that.
I plan to be around, I don't know about you, I plan to be around.
Calling the planning commission in.
Okay, I understand. And I know it'd be a lot of work, Mr. Hathaway, but I think Mr. Starr makes a valid point, and several other people here in the Commissioners made a valid point of structuring an overlay district that would help identify those areas that we, as a community or as a county, would like to see those more dense residential products occur in, that occur in areas where there are the goods and services, that we'd be supportive of that effort and also kind of preserve the character of the rural atmosphere in the agricultural areas that are scattered without, you know, just in general, all over the county. And I offer my services to help in that regard, identifying those areas. I know it would take time, but I think that would be a very important part of an analysis to not just amend, but make this ordinance more workable for the future. Right now, if I think if we were to pass this ordinance, it'd be a little more of a Band-Aid than it would be future-looking. And I would rather change this ordinance more substantially to make it last the duration of time than just a couple of years.
Madam Chair, Rodney, one of the things that's brought up, I'm sorry. One of the things that's brought up about using the public service, using our utilities. And so, if they, if it's too wide range that they can't use public because there's only so many lots and they're decided to go with septic or, you know, whatever like that, the county is losing then connection fees, the use of the water costs. And at a time when we're trying to get the Pumonki online, I would think we're looking at, you know, trying to get as many of those connection fees as soon as we can. And that would be in, and I like the idea of the overlay. You know, the overlay would be, I would expect, be where those type of utilities are or easy to connect to versus clusters that may be that don't have internet, don't have water, don't have anything like that.
So, to, just so I understand...
Okay.
As far as the open space requirements and all of that, you'd like for us to look at that, too? Because now, if we're looking at locating these in utility areas, which was not our intent, then I do believe that we do need to look at the open space requirement and allow for more of a density, probably more than what we have today, so that we can have the return on our utility system. Right now, the intent is not really for clusters to be located within our utility service areas, our dense areas. It's those agricultural areas that we're seeing the clusters occur in, lands that are designated for rural lands. And I'll definitely do the exercise, and actually, it won't be that difficult because we can use GIS to do that. But yes, I can definitely do that, and, you know, maybe we'll have GIS set up so we can move some things around real time.
Some examples would be great to see, you know, how that generates out. Because that gives us more information to visualize, to see the, maybe the growth patterns in the future, subject to an ordinance change that would promote that kind of atmosphere, okay? And if I may continue, Madam Chair, Mr. Hefty, our options tonight are, and then I'm going to ask you about one more thing. Our options tonight?
Yes, your options tonight are to make a recommendation for approval or denial to the Board of Supervisors, as one. You can table this. There is a requirement in the code that you act within a hundred days of the referral of this item to you. Otherwise, it's deemed an approval recommendation, so I don't know where we are.
Is that today?
When did the clock start? What's the date? March fourteenth? So, a hundred days would be...
A little over three months.
April, May, June? A month and a half of the day.
Yeah, I think you could do it at your next meeting, sounds like you could. You could table it or take no action.
The tabling does not stop the time clock, correct?
It does not.
No.
Okay, next question I have. Could we make a suggestion? Or is it available for us to make a suggestion to the board that there be a temporary moratorium on the acceptance of any new cluster subdivisions until this ordinance gets fully vetted?
No, we can't have a moratorium on cluster subdivisions.
All right, I'll scratch that off.
Okay, I have a question for you. I'm thinking about what's driving this change. And am I right or am I wrong about this change? Because I understand that it will impact developers. It will impact other folks that wants to come in and do business here in the county. But as far as this change, will it help, for example, with the enrollment in our schools? It's going to slow down things. What's driving this change?
Well, it's not really the impact of the developers that I think that's driving this change. It's the impact of the residents. For the number of cluster subdivisions that we've seen thus far, yes, it impacts schools, it impacts emergency services, public safety, infrastructure. There is an impact doing that. And unfortunately, the clusters are set up so that the public has no say and has no input into the process for review and approval of this development as a rezoning would give the residents that say.
So, am I right, that is the reason why you guys are suggesting this change?
I believe that, yes, the board is concerned about the impacts of the current clusters that we have.
Mr. Hathaway, he seems to be, the key to your words there is that the community does not have a say into the cluster developments, but neither do we, correct? We are required by state code to have cluster developments.
That is correct. And neither does the Board of Supervisors, which is a concern of theirs.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to defer action on this item until Mr. Hathaway has presented us some information that he can gather from staff and via GIS to give us a little more answers.
Thank you, Mr. Bet. I think I just...
I just saw on the calendar, in a hundred days, I think it's June twenty-second?
Yeah.
So, we're calling on pushes to July?
Hopefully, hopefully till the next meeting.
Or do we bring up the work session or...
Well, that's what, is it possible to get additional information pulled together such that we could have a work session before the next scheduled planning commission meeting?
I think it's possible.
Can I go back to the hundred days? Is that for, a hundred days for us to act?
Not the board, but us?
Just us? So, the twenty-second would be the day after our next meeting? We're meeting the twenty-first of June. No, okay, but I'm just saying that even if it is a hundred days at that point in time, we would have a full meeting the night before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, a meeting between now and then would be, reason for that would be?
Discussion of this topic.
Discussion of the, of information and probably GIS, GIS displays to actually be able to see, because we are, we're probably going to have a relatively full agenda in June as well. So, you know, I'd like to give this the proper amount of time. So, that was my, that was my thought for the having a work session.
We would act on it then the twenty-first?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't want to have a meeting that we'd act on.
Can we also get some information on, like, the last five years? What cluster subdivisions have impacted?
Yeah.
This county? Can I also ask, like, Rodney, where, did we look at other localities and come up with these numbers that are being recommended?
We did. You know, ten acres, it's not a number we just came up with.
Right.
It's from other localities, and the closest is Hanover. They currently have a density calculation of one house per ten acres.
What about Goachlin?
I looked at Goachlin, and they have to have a cluster subdivision because I imagine their growth rate is more than ten percent. But I'm not sure what their requirement is. That is one of the localities that I looked at, but I don't remember.
I've just always heard that we're, you know, compared to Goachlin quite a bit, so...
Well, one other, I know there's a motion on the table. Rodney, one other question on the requirement for a water system. Has the number of lots been changed for all subdivisions? Not just cluster subdivisions?
I'm going to turn to Kelly, so, yes.
Did we change? Okay. Okay.
Applies to all, any subdivision of eight or more.
Except any.
Correct.
Except any, okay.
Or they need to sign up with the county?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah, but if they're, the county water systems only extend out so far, though.
That's correct. And, you know, I don't know if I'll have enough time to look at that by June, but I would like to have a conversation with our utility director about that requirement. One of the things we're moving away from as a county is all these little independent water systems. Because when we require that they're constructed, they have to be constructed to our standards, and we take them over and maintain them. And there's a big push, and there has been in the county over the past five years, to tie all of our systems together to eventually have one looping system with the withdrawal source from the Pumonkis. So, I'll work with our public utilities director on that one.
Okay. I just, I used to live in Woodhaven and was on the water company board, and running all those smaller systems, I know, is, has got to be impossibly hard.
Yes.
So, yeah, all right, so...
I have another question.
Okay.
How many, how many applications are in progress right now for clusters?
We have three in progress, and we're meeting with another group, I believe next week, that wants to do a cluster, fairly large tract of land, about two-hundred-and-seventy-some acres, it's a big tract. We haven't met with them yet, so I'm not sure how many lots that they're proposing. But it's a pretty large tract, and I don't think there's a lot of RPA on that tract either, so we'll see.
Madam Chair, I do have one question as well. And regarding RPAs, based on the current definition, includes RPAs in the calculation, density calculation?
Yes, it does.
Will the proposed not factor in RPAs?
That's something we'll look at.
Okay, because it's not spelled out the same way.
Right, right, that's right. In the proposed, you can include RPA in your density calculations, and we'll look at that.
And I know, and I did read Mr. Starr's letter, or, and I guess some assurances for him as far as what he has in the works today. How is that impacted?
I believe he has preliminary approval for all of his developments, so he has vested... I believe he has preliminary approval for all of his developments, so he is vested per the state code. But I'm also fine if we want to add language that any application submitted as of May one, this new ordinance would not apply to.
And of course too, and even if we vote on this in June, it's not going to get to the board supervisors until certainly the following month, so.
Did they want it quicker? Did, did, did the board want the, us to vote on it quicker?
You know, I, yes, but I believe the board understands the process as, as well. So if it takes a little longer and, and we get a better product, I, I think they'll be fine with that.
Mr. Hathaway, what, with the board, if the board, or if this commission takes, delays the, the decision on this proposed amendment, the board can or cannot act upon without our recommendation?
I'm gonna turn to county minister, I mean, our county attorney. I believe they do need your recommendation.
I, I, my understanding is that we have to have a public hearing on it. But if we decide to make no action on it, which is, if we table it tonight, can the board still take action?
No, the board must wait until you have made a recommendation unless you don't make an action at your next meeting. And then the board could move forward after that.
Thank you. So that was my, my concern was if there's a power outage or something, if that meeting doesn't happen on June twenty-first and we don't have a meeting, then I think Mr. Hathaway, you said if we don't act by the twenty-first, it goes up as though we had approved it or recommended approval? Is that the default?
That's the default, yes. You do nothing to redeem to have approved it or recommended approval.
So we're depending on grid reliability now?
You, you just approved this solar project.
But, but Rodney, if that hundred days goes past, the board can approve whatever parts or take out whatever they want to do at that next meeting.
They, they, they could. Or they could still wait until they receive your, your recommendation. I believe so. I believe so.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the floor to, to table. We also have Mr. Hathaway who will be working on some additional statistics and graphics with, with the hopes that we can have a work session scheduled between now and the next scheduled planning commission meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Do you need a second?
I don't, I don't think so.
All right, to table resolution number PC dash eleven dash twenty-two and ordinance amendment OA dash zero-three dash twenty-two. Dr. Schmidt? Oh, until the June meeting, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller, Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas? Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Back to the agenda. There, Kelly, there is no new business, correct? Okay. The chairman's report, I think the, the one item that I'd like to discuss, Mr. Hathaway, is the status of the comp plan steering committee and, and where, where you are in starting that pro- starting that process.
Sure.
And one question, the, I know the, the steer- the steering committee members have been, have been appointed. There are two planning commission positions that are, that are still yet to be filled. So we need to, we need to fill those, correct?
That, that, that is correct. The charter for the planning, the comp plan steering committee does include two positions for the planning commission. Contracts are signed with the consultant and I know they've been communicating with Kelly. They're doing a lot of background research now. Kelly, have they reached out as far as a schedule for a meeting with the steering committee? We'll, we'll follow up with them. We've been sharing a lot of data with them and they've, they're, they're definitely working, but they haven't given us a schedule for the first meeting yet, but.
Okay, for that, for that first plant, planning meeting?
Right.
Okay. In no- knowing, knowing that there are two, two positions open on the steering committee from the planning commission. We, we definitely, we definitely want representation. Is there anyone who particularly would like to, I know Mr. Moyer is already appointed?
Yes, so I'm out of the minutes.
Yeah, yeah. But is there anyone that particularly wants to ha- play, play a role in the camp, comp plan revision process? I'm probably gonna go to the meetings whether or not I'm, I'm actually a representative or not, but I, I know I'm I have an active interest in it, but I, I want to throw it out to all the other commissioners.
I'm willing to serve Madam Chair if no one else.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? It's eighteen-month to two-year commitment.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna be like you, I'll probably attend, if not all, most of them. And I don't want to displace any other interested party of the commission from representing the commission there. But I plan to attend too, so.
Come on, you mice.
I'm both from the same district.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm want to be interested, interested listening party. You have the right to volunteer, somebody.
Vol- voluntold. I, why, because it, because it is, it is such a, a, a big commitment and, you know, fr- frankly, this is a very important process that should be, you know, so, somebody with some experience should, should be, should be si- sitting on it, so. It, it's, it's up, it's up to, it's up to you all. You know, I don't want to voluntold anybody with, on a commitment like this.
So you two say you're gonna go, but you don't want to be.
I, I can, I can, I can, I can be, but I didn't, I don't. I, I don't want to displace anybody else if, if there are other, other commissioners that have an active interest and want to put in that kind of time.
My, my position is, I'm vice chair. And I would sit in her stead if she chooses not to go, but I'm an interested party, period. Okay? So I don't necessarily want, since I do this as chairman, I don't necessarily be, want to be there as the outspoken party and want to listen and gather the information. Well, no, I'm not as qualified, I don't have the experience that you guys have. And so I think the point you made was really, was really well stated that, you know, we want to make sure that we're represented with the right people. So I'm not offended if you want to, if you want to fill that role, trust me.
Well, at this time, under circumstances, I don't know that I can actually.
Whoop, excuse me. There will be a lot of opportunity in the future surrounding the, the zoning ordinance rewrite that is, is going to come from this comp plan revision, so.
Hey Kelly? Um, in your, in your interactions with the consultant? I'm sure they're nine-to-five type people, right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? And, and every one of us got busy schedules and things of that nature and I wouldn't mind being the representative there. I just think I should be a little bit more subordinate. Uh, I would, I, I would volunteer, but I'd, my week usually is occupied, my weekdays, Tuesday through Thursday is pretty free, okay? Mondays and Fridays, Saturday and Sundays, um. No. I'm at a racetrack, so I wouldn't even that golf, but. So, I mean, I don't want to, the, the steering committee just to preference the dates around my activity per se. But I wouldn't mind volunteering if there's nobody else who would like to step into that position. So if it can work out like that, that's fine. If, I, I don't want to be the, the disappearing person from the steering committee.
Or do we establish alternates or is that able, we able to do that?
I don't know if that's in the charter or not.
These will have to be appointments made, like, we'll give your name to the board and they'll appoint you for the parts of the charter. The charter doesn't mention the alternate, but if someone is able, not able to attend.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't be part of the quorum unless we amended the charter, which we could do that too, it just takes a little time.
Rodney, I doubt if the Plan RVA had a charter for their last alternate debacle. That, you know, five commissioners can come from, from Hanover, but the alternate can vote for all five?
Actually, they did. Well, no.
No, not.
They, they amended their, that's in their bylaws.
That's their bylaws they did?
They changed their bylaws to do that and the board, each locality had to vote on that and the board voted on that.
The, the other thing, Rodney, the, there are ten people on the steering committee, is that, am I?
Fourteen.
I believe it is, fourteen. And then you have a representative from the EDA.
EDA and the.
Myself, yeah. And two from the planning commission. Two per district.
It is two per district, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, a member of the AFD.
Ro- Rodney?
And utilities, isn't it? Utilities on there?
No, I don't think utilities.
Yes.
You. EA.
EDA.
EDA.
And the, then the five, I mean, the five from the, from the various, I mean, the ten from the various districts and the two from the.
Yeah. Yeah.
All districts will be well represented.
I think so.
I, I think, I think that's what, what I'm getting at, we don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, no, no, we, I don't, I don't think we have to worry about that. Would this be, would this be a re- reasonable solution? Since both of us, since both of us are going, are, are going to try and go to most, most or all of the meetings anyway, but possibly as a interest, interested bystander and not be voting? Could we, we have a, a, a primary and an alternate? And then would?
Where's your support?
Where, where, where the, where that, that position, who, whoever's sitting in that position would be the one vote. Even, even if we were both at the meeting.
Only one person.
There, there would be one vo- one vote fro- from that position.
I think we can make that work. Let me get with Brendan and we'll look at the charter, but I, I think we can make that.
All right.
Are we appoint Tommy?
Okay, all right, so. All right, well, that's all I have for my report.
The twenty-first.
You can, you can make your recommendations, but it has to be voted on by the board, so. You might not get appointed, I don't know.
Okay. And is there, is there a Plan RVA report?
Yes, I attended the meeting last week and we voted on the budget, which didn't increase that much, but they also, they also broke the budget down into categories this year. That was something that was new, so that you could see where the funds are being used across lines of businesses. So administration, community development, transportation.
There's, there's an echo.
I don't know. Mr. Davis, does he have his own? No, okay. Anyway, but the, the main thing I wanted to mention is the June ninth meeting has been canceled because there is a joint meeting that is going to take place on June the second between Plan RVA, the Transportation Planning Organization and the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. And it just says, "Join us for a discussion about aligning the priority initiatives of all three organizations highlighting successes from the past year and standing together in support of upcoming proj- projects of regional, regional significance." And that's open to anyone to attend, so.
June second?
Yes, from nine to eleven at the Vida Richmond District Office. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Do any of the commissioners have reports or anything?
Not a report, but concern. Again, it's still, I have the concern at the intersection of dispatch and two forty-nine. The traffic has gotten really a little bit difficult, especially for some school buses now coming in. It's hard to make a left-hand turn onto two forty-nine. So I just hope that somebody is paying attention to it.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. And staff reports?
I just wanted to point out the monthly report, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention, I sent this email to Kelly. The Virginia Co-op Extension is doing a webinar. Informational webinar, large-scale solar projects and land use planning. It's on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth at ten o'clock. My wife actually forwarded this to me. I don't know how to get it to all of you, other than if you can forward an email to them and you can sign up and register if you're interested. It's just a couple hours, but knowledge is power and we see the number of these applications coming in, so it might be worthwhile. It says, "Large-scale solar projects and land use planning." It's a, something between Virginia Tech and West Virginia University, hosted or sponsored by our Co-op Extension.
Is there, is there a website that we can go to?
Yeah, there's a link that she'll forward you and you can click on it to register. So that's Wednesday, May twen- May twenty-fifth.
I, I do think I blind copied all of you and forwarded it, but I'll, I can check and do it again. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Can you do me a favor and just send it to me again right now?
I'll look, it's called Blackout for some reason right now, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
When I leave here, I'll try, I'll try to send it.
Okay, you'll keep it at the top of my, my inbox. The black hole. Okay, so before you, is that all, I'm sorry? Okay. Um, handed out the monthly report, uh, that Ms. Adams put together, she was kind of looking for some feedback compared to the report, um, we did last month and if you like the spreadsheet format better than the Word document, um, to let her know, I, I think so too, I like the spreadsheet better too, okay? I'll tell her.
Yeah.
Have her put a legend at the bottom?
Yeah. Yep.
That's it, that's, it's really good, oh, thank you.
I will, definitely. Okay, and then, um, I guess we'll talk amongst the staff about how long we think it might take to gather the information y'all are looking for, for the cluster, um, it's gonna be kinda tough scheduling a work session, I think, but after Memorial Day weekend, I'm assuming would be preferable, um, we'll look at that. And then as far as public hearings coming up, we've got a definite, um, to, uh, simple rezoning from A one to R one, it's currently a split-zoned parcel and he wants the whole thing, uh, rezoned to R one, it was kind of a complicated, weird one. Then the New Kent Solar Project came in, they're not rushing us to go to a public hearing, but that could possibly be on the agenda for June, that's that large-scale one off Olivet Church. And then Liberty Landing, we are having a staff meeting with them next Wednesday to discuss our concerns, so depending on how that meeting goes, they may or may not be ready for a June public hearing. Liberty Landing, yeah, the pod, yeah, so, those are the, what's on our radar as far as public hearings. It could be, yeah. Oh, and then, did the meeting date change? I completely forgot that Juneteenth, um, was made a holiday this year, so we didn't have it on the schedule, so we'll have to do, um, a meeting date change for Tuesday. Anything else? No, okay. That's all, go ahead.
Do we require a vote? Do we require a vote on the date change since we voted initially on it?
I guess you could.
Just, it wouldn't hurt, yeah, to change the meeting schedule officially.
May I have a motion to change, officially change the meeting date of the June Planning Commission meeting?
That makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend?
No. Oh, okay.
Do, do we need a roll call?
You could do a voice vote on this one, I think.
Yeah, that's it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the, the, next, next meeting will be Tuesday, June twenty-first at six-thirty. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
You have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Rodney, thank you.